All right, it is 4:30. Call the meeting to order. All rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Citizens' concerns. Anybody want to start the meeting out? All right, we'll move along. Approval of the agenda for today. Need a motion?
I'd move approval of the agenda dated March 31st, 2015.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Approval of the minutes for March 24th.
Move approval of the minutes dated March 24th, 2015.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Need approval of the claims. Need a motion?
I'd move approval of the claims with further discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm wondering if this is basically a request for information. I notice on January 1st and February 1st for Project Phoenix, we have amounts of $13,795.16. And then on February 1st, $12,258.97. And my request would be if someone from the auditor's office knows this or if we just need this information in a subsequent meeting, we'll take that as well. But if this is for actual build services or if this is just part of the overall contract.
I just saw a letter today from Cliff Millard. They are done, I believe, today.
Do you know anything about it, Dennis?
As far as I know, they are for build services. If it's a monthly deal, it'll be the same dollar amount every month. And I know throughout the year, we budget X number of dollars. They actually come in usually under that because they don't have much clientele to take care of. So I'm pretty sure, do you want to check? I'm pretty sure it's on build services.
Can you balance that out and see what's left?
Yep.
For next week?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Abstain. Okay, human resources. Mr. Gilliland. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions? Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Do we have? Agenda was passed out here, public is? Is that the revised one that was passed out? Because this does not show a closed session.
I don't have the revised one either.
That's from yours, but that's not what's out there. Well, I'm just going to announce that the revised agenda is not around here. Is that okay, Joshua? As long as we notify folks or? Because it's going to have an agenda item at the end that was not on there. 16 has been added to this agenda that.
Could someone make copies now to make them available if the public wants to see?
It's an action item. I don't know if we can put an action item on.
No, it was a revised agenda. It was posted in time, but the one that has been put out here for the public at this meeting does not have the revised agenda.
Have you got a revised agenda?
The item in question is action from the closed session.
Yes, it is on this one here, but I don't know what occurred. I know that it went out in the email, the revised agenda adding this to it. And I'm assuming that it was posted, but I'm just saying I don't think the ones that were printed and put on that table back there have the revised agenda back there.
All right. Can we proceed or do we need to wait for the agenda?
As long as the public knows that there was a revised agenda and it went out, it was posted, and it adds item 16, and they are making copies that will be provided to all you folks.
Okay. Mr. Gilliland?
So we did have also the 2080 agreement. Wanted to bring that out and discuss that. We've essentially what we've got is we've got two 28 agreements that have already been signed within the past 12 months. One was signed by George Boykin, the other by Mark Monson. George signed the 2080 agreement in May of 2014. The other one, Mark signed in January of 2015. It's pretty, it's two pretty diverse points of view. Both were in agreement, meaning George and Mark were both in agreement on the language. The language in the signed agreements is identical. The only exception was that Cherokee County withdrew from the Sioux Rivers region. And they, I'm not sure of the reasoning, but they did withdraw, which left us with just three participating counties, which would be Sioux, Plymouth, and Woodbury. And that was why the revised 2080 was signed in January. And now, just two months later, we're seeing an introduction of the new language, the 2080. The new language for the 2080 does alter the contract quite a bit. It alters some of the fiscal pieces. It also alters some of the basic relationship as far as employment there. We feel it's important that we do maintain control of employees. It's also our job to ask questions about these changes, bring these questions to you, which is kind of the purpose of what I'm doing today. There are two, there are also two new documents that were presented. One's a service coordinator contract and a service coordinator job description. These were not approved by the governance board. And then there was the new language that was proposed for the 2080. And as stated, we believe this language to be even more concerning. This was not approved by the governance board. And some basic questions that we had were the duties of coordinators are quite different from county to county. So why would there only be one job description for the three coordinator positions? Why are these necessary in addition to the 2080? Most everything was lined out in the 2080. And why would we completely abdicate the coordinator to Sioux Rivers region? Those are the basic questions that we had.
Ed, could you give us the page number that you're talking about as you go?
Sure. We looked at page eight in the old contract, in the old 2080. And then there was the new proposed language, which was, it's not page marked, but it would be that section 6.3 that was on page eight in the original two 280s.
And the addition is what is bottom?
The addition is all of this that was in yellow on those sheets. The Board of Supervisors in each of the counties that comprise the Sioux Rivers Regional MHDS shall maintain a service coordinator in their respective counties. The Governance Board shall contract with that person to provide service coordination in said county with direct supervision provided by the CEO. The service coordinators are employees of their respective counties. And I can stop reading anytime you want if you want to just continue to read yourself.
All right, but that, that had been in the works for quite some time. So I'm wondering, what's the question on it?
Well, the question is, we signed, and I, the question really is more for you guys. The concern that I had just looking at it is that clearly you have a change. It appears to be a change in the hierarchy, if you will, of.
That would not have been in the works because the 2080 signed in January would have been identical to the first one.
Yeah, I can't count.
So if there were changes, they had to come after the January signing.
Well, the changes, it's like everything else that's coming down the road. And the change is what exactly?
The change is everything that's highlighted in yellow. And again, it went from a very simple concept to a little bit more complicated. The previous one said the Board of Supervisors in each of the counties that comprise the Sioux Rivers Regional MHDS shall employ an MHDS coordinator, pretty straightforward in their respective county. Governance Board shall appoint that person to provide service coordination in said county. And that was kind of where it ended. The, you know, it said initially the CPC administrator from each county will function as the MHDS coordinator for their respective county. The service coordinator shall remain employees of their respective counties and shall report to the particular Board of Supervisors for non-MHDS regional responsibilities. For function related to the region, service coordinator shall be accounted to Sioux Rivers Region Governing Board of Directors. So it showed that they had both sets of duties to the region and to the county. Did show that they were clearly employees of the counties that they were from, whether it's Plymouth or Sioux or Woodbury. And then the next one said the Board of Supervisors in each of the counties that comprise the Sioux Rivers Region MHDS shall maintain a service coordinator in their respective county. Now we've switched it to the Board of Supervisors shall maintain, and the Governance Board shall contract with that person to provide service coordination in said county with direct supervision provided by the CEO. The service coordinators are employees of their respective counties for payroll and benefit purposes. To me, that sentence right there changes a lot. It said that they were respons, that they were employees of Woodbury County previously. Now it says that they're counties with respect to payroll and benefits only.
I think that's a huge change.
Can I? We've got a couple of time sets.
Okay, yes, sir. I'd be glad to stand down.
Moving to number nine. Public hearing and sale of the property. Parcel 128595, also known as 1201 West Third Street. The hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak for or against the sale of this property? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move the hearing to close.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Anyone here to bid on that property?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
My name is Donna Johnson. I live two doors down from that property at 313 Myrtle Street. And we have an ambition to turn that property into a neighborhood garden.
Whoa.
Yes. And so I've been praying about for three years, and you're hopefully going to give me the opportunity. I have neighbors and friends who are avid gardeners, but they need dirt to dig in. So that's what we want to do with the property.
What would your bid be?
Well, the bid that I had originally given was $150. And I received a piece of mail from Heather Satterwhite. And she said that my minimum bid is 188.
Okay, it's 150 plus.
Right, right.
So you're bidding 188?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to bid on this property? Going once? Going twice? Need a motion?
Move the property sold to Donna Johnson.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay. Is someone upstairs, Karen?
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you and blessings on all of you. And if you want radishes or lettuce, come by anytime.
Thank you.
I'd be careful with that. You might have some takers. Okay, next one. Public hearing and sale of property of 365370, also known as 1930 Riverside Boulevard. The hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak for or against the sale of this property? Hearing done. I would take a motion to close the hearing. You want to speak for or against?
I want to speak for it. My name is Don Jolyn. I have the property adjoining this property, and I'd like to put a bid in on it.
Okay, that's next.
We have to close the hearing first, Mr. Jolyn.
Oh, you have to hold hearing first.
All right, need a motion to close the hearing?
Move it.
Need a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Now, what would your bid be?
I'm here to bid as well.
Oh, okay.
Okay. My bid would be $1,000.
Okay. Sir? Your name is Don Jolyn, and your name is?
Terry Eigner.
Okay.
Eigner?
Yes, sir.
And your bid?
1,100.
Okay.
15,000.
1,600.
2,000.
Come on, you're going to lower taxes at the rate you're going.
2100.
All right.
2200.
2,300.
24.
25.
26.
27.
28.
29.
30.
3,500.
4,000.
4,100.
Could I ask a question here?
Sure.
Do you have the ability to refuse a bid?
At this point, probably not.
Not yet, not.
Joshua?
I'd like to know what is going to be done with this property because I have the adjoining property and right now it's a garbage pit in back. And I'd like to know if it's going to be cleaned up and graded or what's going to happen to it? Or is it going to be left just the way it is?
I don't know that we can do anything with that, Josh.
I think we have to sell to the highest bidder.
What were we at, 10,000?
I know what it's worth. It's worth 1,000. I don't know what he's.
It makes it feel better. I own the property next door. I just bought the property, the house next door.
You bought the house next door?
Yes, so I'm worried that you're going to make it a parking lot, so.
It will be a park, not a parking lot. It'll be graded and it'll be a fence put up and it'll be clean.
Right, and I heard semi coming through it, so that's why. Because I have small children that live in the house.
Well, I employ a few people too, and yeah.
And I'm not here to debate you. It makes me feel better.
Where were we?
4,100.
4,100?
42.
43.
44.
45.
46.
47.
48.
49.
49, 50. Oh, shit, this is ridiculous. Go ahead. What's your top bid?
If you're at five?
I'm at five.
I'm on.
Five grand? Is there?
Thank you very much.
Is there a fee on this? I don't see one. Recording fee? Okay, five grand plus recording, and that nice lady over there will take your money. Thank you, sir.
You need a motion, Mark?
Yeah.
Pardon?
You need a motion.
Need a motion?
Move the property sold to Don Jolyn.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right, now we're going to go, yeah, let's go back. Sorry, Ed.
It's all right. Now that I have no idea where I was, we should be good. Yes, go ahead.
I was just saying that I think that the language that is proposed on the change to the 28 agreement is not a small change, but a seismic one. And whether or not that was in the works, so to speak. I actually typed out my comments on this, and I'll give them to the rest of the board and would have given them earlier if I had the agenda earlier. But as we all received the agenda at the same time and read through this language, I want to be clear that the service coordinator contract and job description were not approved by the governance board nor the new language. And my intention as a board member is not to abdicate our statutory responsibilities by which we are elected. And so that the members of the public understand, there's an unelected CEO of a region who I believe, and I'm speaking for myself, overstepped his bounds by delivering duties, a job description, and amended language to a 2080 agreement with very little time for review, which contradicts the agreement that this board entered into by my predecessor's signature on behalf of the board. George Boykin signed one agreement. Mark Monson signed a second identical agreement. Well, the only difference was, as Mr. Gilliland mentioned, that Cherokee County opted out between May and January. This agreement represents on behalf of the board over 100,000 Woodbury County citizens and property taxes flow through this mental health levy with a share being over $3 million. So of all the issues we're dealing with, this issue with the region is very disconcerting. Includes one statement by our supervisor believes apparently we've ceded property paid for by county taxes to the region and referencing the Tribeview facility. And so I believe as a county and duly elected supervisors, we have an obligation to taxpayers not to cede our authorities or our duties. The 280 agreement that is signed addresses these issues currently. And so I would like to have formalized by our Human Resources Director Ed Gilliland a letter on behalf of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, and I understand this is discussion right now, that under the advisement of our county attorney as well states that we have the right to manage our employees, our facilities, not have a 2080 agreement amended without transparency. And I'll cite in the 2080 agreement the following language. This is current. The service coordinators shall remain employees of their respective counties and shall report to the particular Board of Supervisors for non-MHDS regional responsibilities. We exercise the full power of our statutory responsibilities and our recourse is not limited. It includes pursuing mediation and arbitration under Iowa Code, Chapter 679(c), and reminding members of the region and ourselves, any member county, by resolution of its Board of Supervisors may withdraw from Sioux Rivers Regional MHDS. By giving written notice to the governing board no later than November 15th, prior to the end of the fiscal year, the withdrawal will be effective. So I would ask that these comments be entered in the record for the minutes of our meeting and be used in helping craft a letter from our HR director on behalf of the board to the Sioux Rivers Region Board of Supervisors for member counties.
Jeremy, everything that has been done by the region has been done to follow state I don't know, I don't see that big a change in this.
Huge change, Larry. Huge.
I don't see it because it says it. If you read the whole thing instead of just bits and pieces.
And I did.
But will report to their particular Board of Supervisors only for business unrelated to Sioux Rivers Regional MHDS.
But the concern, I mean, the concern of Woodbury County represented by Supervisor Monson, myself, and two supervisors from other, two other counties was particularly our question was why, why does this need to be changed? The reasoning of following code was never brought up to my recollection. Ed did bring forward many of these same concerns. It does represent a seismic shift, and I completely agree with Supervisor Taylor's remarks. To contract with a person versus contracting with a county cedes the right of the counties to provide who they see to be a fit for that, for that job. And also by proposing a singular job description, you know, our county has, to say the least, several more in this area than Sioux and Plymouth. So it is a, it is a big change. And speaking for myself, I didn't hear any sort of compelling reason why the 28E needed to be changed so swiftly. So that is what we relayed to the governance board, and that is why we did not take action on it at the last meeting.
I do, have you done any inquiries on the other regions to see if there are job descriptions for the CPCs? I think maybe they've already done theirs. They're already there. We're just a little bit behind what the other regions have done. And it's really the way I look at it, it seems to, you know, the county system for mental health is over. It's done. It's regions now. So when you're doing mental health work, you really aren't a county employee. You're working for the region. So it could be looked at as just formalizing that relationship with the region. You know, we worked really hard to get along with our other counties and to trust each other because we all care about our consumers. Now this seems divisive to me.
I disagree.
And what's your recourse? If you don't agree with this, what's your recourse? I mean, really, what's the, it's going to pass.
If I might, Ed.
If it's an amendment, it only takes two-thirds of the counties to approve this.
Takes all.
But really, what, what's the purpose?
That was our.
To fight this? I guess I don't understand.
What's the purpose in doing it?
I don't know that.
We're ceding our employees to an unelected CEO of a region, and in addition to that, we actually heard that we had ceded some of our property, which isn't true. We need to make sure that if we have over $3 million in property taxes that's a flow through for mental health, that we make sure that we have the best and most responsive relationship, working relationship. And when you cede that authority and those statutory responsibilities, I would ask, where in Iowa Code, I mean, that was what was cited. We need to become in compliance with Iowa Code and make this change that the previous board never entered into. Where in Iowa Code does it state that service coordinators will no longer be employees of their respective counties? It doesn't.
But I don't think it's saying that you won't be employees. It's just when you're doing mental health duties, you will be responsible to the region. I don't know if that's any different than what happened on July 1st of 2014. I don't see anybody's job description necessarily changing or duties changing.
They gave us one. If I may.
But are, okay, go ahead.
And I, sorry, I just want to jump in here. It's not, I don't think there's any division that I've witnessed on the governance board. None of these changes came from the four other supervisors sit on the board. It came from the CEO of the region. So I just want to.
Well, that's not necessarily what I have heard. I've heard that already that there may be a county that wants to leave, and it's hearsay, but nonetheless Cherokee left because the fear was they did not want the big county, Woodbury, to come in and be the giant in the room and control everything. So they, they expressed it early on. You know, we made a pledge at that point in time that we would work very hard not to be that person, not to be that county. And they didn't believe us, quite honestly. Cherokee just didn't believe that that wouldn't happen. Well, they're gone, and now we've got another county saying, you know, we were all in this together, and this really is, this will divide and ruin what I think has been a good working relationship. And I can only say that because I know the process we went through on when we were sizing everybody up and we were trying to gain trust. And, you know, early on, we, there was a clause that said that if one county, you know, overspent their funds, another county would bail them out. Well, even that was rather bogus because even at that time, it was region money. But our, but our psyche or maybe our lack of trust, we put that in there. Well, now that's going to change too. All the money's going to be pooled. So I think you can't look at this like it's a county system anymore. It isn't. It's a region system.
Ed? Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, and as I walked through this with the attorney, we talked about the fact that the 2080 agreement, the one that was in place that George had signed, had, had covered the relationship between our, between Woodbury County, between the counties. And what this appeared to do is it appeared to take away that very situation like you're talking about, Jackie. It pulled it back from where the employees that we were to provide are more or less leaving our employment and becoming employees of the region. But I don't think that was the intent of the agreement or the intent of the other supervisors from what they told us.
That is where it's all going.
It is going there, unfortunately.
It's going to be region. It's not going to be, the county is going to be out of this, out of mental health.
Then why doesn't?
Then why doesn't the state take over the taxation?
I wish they would.
Well, they aren't.
I can't deal with the state. All I could do, and I can't even do this anymore because I'm not a part of that governance board, but the governance board has got to work within the constraints that they are dealing with. Now, if they want to make the CPCs their employees, more power to them. What do we need them for? They're dealing with the region, not the county.
Can I just ask this question of somebody who hasn't gone to, obviously, the governance board? So my assumption is the other supervisors, so there's two other supervisors, just for the help of the public.
There's six supervisors.
Right. Two per county.
Two, two, two.
So the other four supervisors are really wanting this? Is that what I'm?
I don't think I heard that.
Because it's so divisive. I mean, the other supervisors, these two supervisors from each of the other counties, they should be fully behind this. And it's just Woodbury County that's the outlier. I mean, if we find out an amended 280 agreement that this board had never signed, but we found out we're somehow going down this road and no longer have those employees.
In fact, the suggestion that this does involve a material change in the 28 either would require a unanimous vote did not come from Woodbury County. So there is support in the room for what we're saying.
So the other supervisors.
Exactly, exactly.
Are unanimous.
They recognize the question.
Is coming from other supervisors?
Yes.
So in order to be unified on this and not to be divisive, then we would be embracing what the other supervisors who have those same statutory concerns, I mean.
I don't know if that's true. I mean, you can go down that road. You know, a lot of what, a lot of what you deal with, none of the supervisors liked all along, all along. No one wanted to go from a county to a region. Every step of the way there, it's been, well, we don't really like this, but we understand this is the direction we have to go. I mean, those, the first six months was, all we really did was kind of complain that we had to do it.
Yeah.
So to say that there's buy-in at every level, there is not, there isn't because there never has been. So you may be right, but it doesn't mean that ultimately that the direction is going to be, it's going to be a region.
And I, and I think we all agree that it's going to be a regional. The only thing that was a concern was what happened to, I mean, Woodbury County right now is responsible for $3 million a year in tax to this.
Three and a half million.
Three and a half million. And if you notice, we've got $124,000 in one employee as an example, and there are others that were being pulled in and being assigned to the region that we're responsible to pay their salaries and benefits for. But yet we really weren't consulted as to, as to what percentages of those, those people's time would be Woodbury County and what percentage would be Sioux Rivers. And so the, the real question is, and it's for the board, not for me, I'm just, it's just my job to point this out because I, obviously, I don't have a vote, which is probably good. Then I could get an even more troll. But the, the whole point of it really boils down to, do, are we going to turn those employees over to Sioux Rivers Region and just pay their benefits and just do those things? Or do we maintain the control as stated originally in the 2080 agreement that's very specifically states that they should be Woodbury County employees? This is what George and the board at that time agreed to. It's also what Mark and the board in January agreed to. And if you look at this, it changes it from a situation where they were essentially responsible to Woodbury County as employees to where they're almost strictly under the direction of a CEO over here, kind of in Orange City or where he happens to be. And you have that to compare, I mean, he has no.
I'm not sure we have a choice, to be quite honest. Honestly, I'd say that. I'm not sure really ultimately we have the choice of, when you're doing mental health functions and duties and working in that realm, you are under the region. Whatever the percentage was in, in June of 2014, June 30th, you know, this, the, the 2080 became effective July 1st, whatever duties, they didn't change. They just moved over to the region. So there wasn't necessarily change. There was just a move of, move over of who is overseeing it. And unfortunately, it's, it's not a real good system, really, but it's the system we've been dealt.
And when you, this was, it was just presented to the board?
Thursday night. He, I'm sorry, he sent this out. This is what I think frustrated the gentleman that was sitting in front of me. I can't remember his name. What he, he was extremely frustrated with is that this was just sent out the night before the meeting, and this came from the CEO. It did not come, as I could, as I understand, Mark, Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, it did not come from the supervisors, the other people on the governance board. This came from the CEO and had not been seen by anybody prior to, I think, Tuesday morning sometime.
Which is probably why it was just a discussion item and not an action item. I would imagine, and most everything.
It was just brought forward.
Yeah.
I think it was brought as an action item.
It was.
It was brought as an action item.
And technically, it wasn't, it didn't follow proper procedure.
Doesn't sound like there was a support for it among the supervisors and the governance board anyway.
You can't say that.
See, that I don't know.
Yeah, you can't say that because we don't know.
And I'm fairness, I wasn't there. So I'm not, I'm not sure. But I would urge our two supervisors who sit on the governance board to exercise the past 2080 agreement that was entered into in writing for which there is a seismic change and not cede that service coordinators remain employees of their respective counties, not state that any property that this county owns and has been paid for by county tax dollars belong to the region when it wasn't paid for originally.
But it does. That's mental health dollars.
The tribe facility belongs to Sioux Rivers.
No, no, it belongs to Woodbury County. But if you go to sell it, the money goes to the region.
We're not selling it, right?
Not selling it at this time.
Well.
The board intends to put the comments.
Sure.
I'm going to do something I rarely do. First, I'll introduce myself. My name's Jim Rixner. I live at 114 Midville Avenue, citizen of Sioux City. For 17 years, I've directed the Sudan Mental Health Center. For 17 years, I've negotiated contracts for Woodbury County prior with, for mental health services. Prior to that, I worked with Native Americans providing mental health services for 20 years. I'm here today because I have spent the better part of the last four years working on everything you're about to destroy. I want to make that very, very, very clear. This is emphatic. We serve people who on any given day can kill themselves. You all know that. We have not had the opportunity to be able to introduce the two new supervisors to our board and to our programs. I've discussed that with the chairman. We've had some conversations. We're anxious to do that. What is not understood about the regionalization process is that it's the regionalization process that has finally brought some sanity, solvency, and good service delivery to the mental health system. And it did that at the expense of everything you're criticizing here right now. The counties had to give something up. I went to almost all the governing board meetings that have taken place except last week because I was dealing with some crisis. Much has been given up by 99 counties in Iowa to produce a much, much better system. And that's exactly what we now have with the Sioux Rivers Region. I will emphatically say to all of you that I had no impression, I was not at last week's meeting, that the other four supervisors would do anything but endorse this 100%. The CEO, Shane Walker, has the full support of the regional governing body, except perhaps for Woodbury County. And I say that guardedly. I'm not trying to make any decisions on any county. But I would petition you all to ask the other four supervisors where they stand on this because the impression I've had at every meeting I've gone to is that they endorse and support Mr. Walker in what he does as a CEO. I'm astounded to listen to an HR director saying that these service coordinators positions would all be the same. Of course they will be. They should be because you have a CEO who manages three people, and he wants the three people to be doing what they should be doing consistently, emphatically throughout these three counties for the mentally ill people we all serve. It's simple HR 101. Furthermore, any questions about how this money is being used and property consistently when the governing board met and those individuals from this board who have been there have seen 100% endorsement of Mr. Butler as the fiscal agent, the fiscal agent for the region. Mr. Butler, as far as I know, has 100% confidence of this board. I said through your seven and a half hour marathon meeting on the budget. Mr. Butler knows his business. The regional board supports him 100%, trusts him 100%. Woodbury County has very few choices in this under the Iowa Code. I would plead with you to contact the other 14 regions and see what they've done before you reach any conclusions about what you think should be done or not done about the county service coordinators. I think it's very important that you understand what's been said here at least once. The county exercises very little control over regional activities in terms of mental health care. You may recall, I came before this board at your budgetary hearings, and I spent about 30 seconds here saying, well, thank you because you don't control the budget I contract for. All right? Now, for 17 years, you have, and all due respect, there were good times, there were bad times, okay? But we got through them. Right now, I negotiate with the region. I have a signed document in Mr. Walker's, Shane's hands from my board president agreeing to the contract. We negotiated the rates, we negotiated the services. I serve on the State Mental Health Planning Council. I'm the president-elect of the National Association of Mentally Ill for the State of Iowa. I've directed the mental health programs here for 17 years. I've been a past member of the Mental Health Commission, past state, past member of the State Disability Commission, and a half a dozen other titles I could give all of you, none of which I've ever said to anybody before. When I was an elected public official and I had people parade in front of me telling me everything they'd done and what their history is, I was too embarrassed. And quite God, honestly, I'm a humble person. But I'm telling you all this now because I know more than any of you about how the mental health system runs in the state of Iowa. I've gone there. I've been with the legislators. I'm Mr. Tarr when he was a representative. I'm down there lobbying. I'm down there talking to people. I know all the DHSH people. I get appointed to the boards. I set in through all the redesigns that created the regional governing body. And that whole regional governing body we're talking about now does exactly what it's supposed to do. And the amendments they're asking you for are simple amendments. One is to have a consistent personnel policy. They were going to contract for your staff anyhow. So were you going to have an argument with them about how they were going to contract for your staff? Because you were going to end up in a kind of a circuitous argument. 100% of their time is with the region. What little time is not with the region is already written into the document, in the 2080 agreement, saying you have some authority in some areas over those employees. Pretty simple to me. This was done to streamline it. And Shane acts only as an agent of the region. There are too many comments made up here about Shane doing this, Shane doing that. Shane presents things to the region. The region acts. And what was presented to the region apparently last week were these amendments. And these amendments are consistent with all the conversations, all the discussion, and everything that we've had at the regional, Mr. Clausen, Mrs. Smith were on those meetings. I was at 90% of them when they were taking place. Furthermore, I'm astounded that you would risk sinking this ship as it sails out of port. This is divisive. The reason the other four county supervisors haven't waded into it because they were hoping that it didn't really happen. Things weren't being said that were being said, that the 2080 agreement wasn't being scrutinized in a way that would jeopardize the management and delivery of services. This is Iowa, ladies and gentlemen. I've been here 40 years. I've learned how to be polite. And even though I have some strength in my words, perhaps, I am polite. We work well with our neighbors. You all know that. Our supervisor friends to the north in Sioux County and Plymouth County are neighborly, good-natured people. They came into this agreement. They knew it was difficult for everybody, and they weren't about to be the one who raised the decisive issue. But if this does not go back to the board, the region, you're going to find that it certainly is divisive. And that's up to you all. As I said, please contact the other members of the other boards of supervisors. I don't want to presume anything on anybody's part. But what I'll also tell you, you have in Woodbury County the best mental health system in Iowa, and what you may do in relation to the region may jeopardize that. It's not about me. It's not about the Sudan Mental Health Center. It's about the partnership we've had with Woodbury County for 17 years. And I was very frank about that. I could tell you conversations I had with chairman here that I was very uncomfortable with, but we got through it. And what was created as a result, you have the only mental health court in all of Iowa, all the other ones have disappeared either for lack of funding or disinterest. You have the only school therapy in all of Iowa, but skilled licensed masters level therapists going into schools. You have the only presence in the Woodbury County jail for trying to provide services to people. You have Friendship House. You have a fantastic operation in terms of so many other programs in this county in collaboration with the Board of Supervisors, with the CPC, and with the Sudan Mental Health Center. We are the major player in the region. We will continue to be the major player, and I don't mean the Sudan Mental Health Center. I mean all of us in this room. Yesterday, we looked at a building for a crisis, a crisis stabilization program. Where's it going to be? It's going to be in Sioux City. Mental health courts. We're going to provide expertise to Plymouth County and to Sioux County for them to develop their, their necessary mental health courts. We're going to work with them on developing school therapy programs. All the programs I'm talking to you about, at various times, we've been told by DHS you'll never be able to do those programs. We'll never fund you for them. We'll never support them. This county did. This county is unique in all of Iowa and for doing what it's done, and it stands out as an exception. Now, as the heart of a region, that region stands out as an exception. Say what you want to about Shane, but you don't say everything. He has no salary doing this. Do you know what they're paying over in eastern Iowa for somebody to be the coordinator of a region? Start with $100,000 and add on the benefits, on and on and on. There are 15 regions. Shane's working for expenses, and that's all as part of his job in Sioux County. That's because Sioux County, Plymouth County, and Woodbury County came together in good faith to, you know, create this system so the taxpayers were not burdened. State money could be drawn down. If this becomes divisive and it becomes a stumbling block and it becomes an obstacle, we lose, we have the opportunity to lose a substantial amount of state money because we will not be able to go forward with the initiatives we're now working on. For mentally ill people, it's crisis stabilization. I could tell you all stories all day long about why we need that, and I'm not going to, but we desperately need it. We need alternatives for people sitting in emergency rooms awaiting to be admitted to a hospital and unfortunately not being admitted. Two weeks ago, the police called me. They said, you know, we've been back and forth to Mercy Hospital five times now. Each time we brought this woman back, they said they would not admit her. She walked out in the street, took her clothes off, and jumped on a car. Then they admitted her after they called me. The police called me and said, can you talk to these people here at the emergency room? We don't want those things happening in Sioux City, Woodbury County, or the region. The region is a strong region. Shane is a good administrator. The three CPCs are good people. We all care about the people we serve. I cannot bear to watch a ship sailing out and being sunk over issues of personnel management and some level of distrust. I plead with you. Talk with the supervisors in this region. Talk with people across the state. Understand the ramifications of the existing 28E agreements. I don't dispute that this is a change in the 28E agreement. Obviously, it is. But it should not be a change that should divide and sink the region. You have no recourse. You have no place to go. You want to attach yourself to another region? You want to go through a torturous process of trying to figure out what counties will work with you, figure out how much it's going to cost the taxpayers of Woodbury County, start all over again? I don't. I certainly hope you don't as well. You want to do the Polk County Act and say we're nation unto ourself because they stacked the legislator with Polk County's legislators? Okay? They can pull that off. You can't in Woodbury County. DHS and the state will not allow you to be a single one, one county region. It will not happen. It's impossible. Okay, I'm time out. I'm, I'm, I want to be respectful, and I'll end. But I do want you to know that I'm more than willing to entertain any meetings with any and all of you to show you precisely what we do. We'll try to arrange those in April if we can, either an open meeting posted by your, your procedures or whatever other process may work. Because I really do want you all to know what we do. I really want you to know how important it is, and I want to be able to understand what we do. We're not going to be able to continue to do it if this region goes down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Chairman, may I?
Chairman, may I comment?
Sure.
I don't think we're looking to sink any ships. I don't think we should be talking about Shane. Ed could ask you a question. We learned just now that by rejecting an amended 2080 that we are about to, quote, "destroy" the region. Hang on. I don't know if also the 2080 that we're operating under right now, signed by either Chairman Boykin or Munson, was also setting us on a course to destroy the region, but I can only assume it was. And I say that tongue in cheek, but I just wanted to ask you, did you not respectfully ask for the reasoning behind all of these changes at the meeting?
Yes, and I'd like to point out, Mr. Rixner, we had no intention of sinking the ship. We're just, and we sort of appreciate all the information.
I'm not accusing anybody intentionally of sinking the ship. I'm saying the ship will sink. That's all. It's a fundamental difference here, that's all.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough. And that, I think what we tried to do is we just tried to say, why are we seeing the difference here in the 2080 agreement? What's the purpose of the line? It doesn't, to us, it didn't make a lot of sense, some of the changes that were there. And we're asking, why are these changes there? What is their fundamental purpose? How are they going to serve the region then? Will they serve the region of Woodbury County then?
I don't think there is any debate, but my response, because that's not what we're here to do, but my response to that is that's a conversation that needs to take place with the regional board.
Sure.
Not in absence of the other members. Whatever the motivation was for them to do what they were doing, whatever the desire is for people to do, we talked about forthright and direct. That's all I'm trying to make happen.
And I agree, and I think that's the purpose that the board has here today, if I may, I think is to speak openly, to discuss it among the five of them, and to be able to speak in one voice. If I'm mistaken, please correct, but I think that was the only purpose, Mr. Rixner.
And Ed?
I apologize if we came across as behaving other than that.
Well, I'm pretty sure my voice isn't going to necessarily match Supervisor Taylor's based on his comments. I mean, I guess I don't know what the fear is, so say to have one voice and a letter's drafted to the region, it's not one voice. It will be the voice of probably, I don't know how many, not me.
Okay, and that's up to you guys. That leaves me out, I just bring the information.
I think you did exactly what you should have done as HR director for Woodbury County. You're not an employee of the region. I think you brought forward some very good questions. I think that this is brought up for board discussion to help this process. I think it's also brought up because Supervisor Munson and I, and I believe Ed, did not receive an answer to the why. And the chairman of the governance board did mention that he would like the CEO and HR and Mark and I to sit down and hash this out, and we certainly intend to, and we are looking at what the region is doing, we are learning tomorrow. We're doing just that. But this is a step in the process, this is just one of those growing pains. And I don't think we are looking to alienate anybody, but as the largest county in this group, we have the largest responsibility to our own taxpayers.
I'm not even going to disagree with Mr. Ung. But in Mr. Taylor's letter, "Any member of county by resolution of its Board of Supervisors may withdraw from the Sioux River Regional MHDS by giving written notice to the governing board no later than November 15th prior to the end of the fiscal year. The withdrawal be effective." Now, that's not even a veiled threat. And it doesn't belong in this conversation, looks nice in print, but it never should have been printed.
I obviously disagree, but the idea isn't to say we're pulling out of the region, but to say we're not going to cede our statutory responsibilities. We can, and this is a progression, if it's not agreed upon in this debate among the governance boards, it may not be a debate because I don't want to speak for them just as Mr. Rixner doesn't want to speak for them. They can speak for themselves. And maybe that'll be the unifying factor that the supervisors don't like, the action item that was presented the day before. But we can exercise our statutory responsibilities. There is a road to other recourse. I hope that we don't go down those roads. But I'm certainly not going to cede what I believe is our clear grounds and the 2080 agreement that was signed by you all. And let me just make this point. Somehow, some way, mental health services have been delivered and functioned without this change to the 2080 agreement. It's unbelievable that it's been able to happen up until now without the change. But it has. We would all admit, even some in the audience would admit that it's worked up until this point, but...
That's because it's not that big of a change, in my opinion. It's just format.
It's huge.
It's not a change in service delivery. It's a say, it may be a change in management, but it's not a change in service delivery. That's why it's functioned well, is because it's the same services will be delivered regardless of who is supervising what. I mean, they are set out in the plan. It has to happen. I mean, they are, it's very laid out in the region, what will happen in the region.
And if I might agree with Jackie completely on that, it is just a management issue that we're talking about. It's the management of the funds and the, you know, the personnel. I would agree with that completely. And there's nothing that I think that anybody had proposed to me that talked at all, or nothing in the questions that I brought that talked about the management of the region.
Right.
I mean, I'm sorry, the delivery of services, excuse me, it was just the, kind of the management setup within it. And that was the part that our council commented on as well.
And I do want to address that issue. I was involved to some extent when they were drafting the original 2080. It's based on a draft put together by the council for ISAC. And when the regionalization was put in place, there was the option of counties either retaining their employees or allowing those employees to become employees of the region. And it's really up to the counties and the region to decide what the region's going to look like. And I'm not aware of any change in the code that mandates that the employees are either regional or county. It's still something that's up to the regions. So I don't think that it's correct to say that it has to be one way or the other, it's up for the members of the region to decide. But it is clear that the region itself is administered, the services in the region are administered at the regional level, and there's the regional administrator. But as far as the employees itself, that's something that in the code is up for debate either way.
That's what I understand. And I would submit before I sit down that I know absolutely nothing about the delivery of services for mental health and don't plan to. But I, my piece was just merely to point out the difference in the employment part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Personally, I cannot support the changes in the 2080 at this point. I think we need to, a lot has to happen before I go there, as well as moving personnel. It doesn't change the service.
Can I just ask you though, what do you think the end result if you can't support it? What do you see the outcome then?
What are we doing? We've got a 2080.
But what do you see if the region, I'm just, it's a question. If the region wants to go that direction, I don't know if they do or not, I'm not attending the meetings anymore myself, but if they do, what are you hoping for Woodbury County? I mean, what do you think the end result is? If you're unwilling to do this?
What's the end result?
Yeah.
That we continue the way we are, which seemed to be working just fine.
So it's to get them to all change their mind? Or I guess I'm wondering, are you think you're going to, we're going to leave the region?
No.
Okay, that, I guess I should just ask it that way.
I'm really not sure that they all think this is what we ought to do.
I don't know either. You may be right, I don't know, but I would hate for us to act prematurely until you have a handle on that at the region meeting.
Well, all of a sudden, a new 2080 just doesn't settle well with me. I mean, it was fine in January.
Well, I don't think it's a brand new one, but that's, keep us posted, I guess.
All right, here we go. County auditor, Pat Gill. We have a consideration for the approval of liquor license application from the White Horse Patrol. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consideration and approval of liquor license application for the Sloan Golf Course. Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Malloy and Mr. Assistant County Attorney.
John Malloy, Information Technology.
Justice Department County Attorney's Office. The reasons for these action items before the board are set out in the materials, it's more of a housekeeping issue than anything. The current citizen representative on the commission is serving his second term at this point pursuant to the 2080 agreement. But it was discovered that the 2080 agreement actually requires that his designation be done by a formal resolution. That's not something that we've done yet, so that's why we're asking for that. Likewise, the same for the supervisor members on the commission. They were approved by motion the first meeting of the board in January. 2080 requires the resolution for whatever reason, so those resolutions are before the board and recommend approval.
All right, first one, approval of resolution designated in the citizen representative on the Woodbury County Information and Communication Commission. Who is Jeff Cypressma?
Correct.
Need a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of resolution designating the Board of Supervisors members on the Woodbury County Information and Communication Commission for 2015. That would be Mr. Ung and Ms. Smith. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Whitman for his assistance with this process.
The bill's in the mail.
Okay.
All right, now we're going to see under nine, approval of resolution for notice of property sale parcel 475410. Need a motion?
The hearing may be for April 14th at 4:42.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, next one up, approval of resolution for the sale of property parcel 334080.
The hearing is set for April 14th at 4:42.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of resolution for property sale parcel 511590. Need a motion? I'll move it. Need a second. Be on 14th day of April at 4:44.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Need a motion for the resolution of tax abatement for IC FYP as a church, I believe. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right.
Afternoon. Rick Snyder, Director of the Conservation Department. You received a rather lengthy attachment with our agenda item request, and I talked with Supervisor Taylor today, he had some concerns about what was in that attachment. I'd like to do a little bit of background, bring you up to date, why that was in there and where we are as of today. That attachment was our full due diligence report. We have been looking at this and working on this since last fall. We had a consultant that we met with, he came to our board meetings three different times, produced a lot of information for us. Initially, we looked at renewable energy options at all of our four rural park areas and the nature center. And the due diligence report when it came back, as Supervisor Taylor pointed out, did not look real attractive. We had issues with our areas served by Woodbury County Rural Electric Cooperative versus those areas served by Mid-American Energy. REC areas, we can only have a five-year net metering contract with them, which does not work. Plus REC, when they put meters in in our parks, we've got multiple meters in the parks. So to do net metering, you have to tie back all those, your alternative energy sources to the backside of those meters, which made it even more expensive to try to do something in those areas. That left us, obviously, with the choice of the areas served by Mid-American Energy, and that is Little Sioux Park and the Dorothy Pico Nature Center. The reason we've been looking at something like this is 20% of our operations expenses go to electrical costs. And it's a sizable amount, doesn't leave us much to do everything else we do out there. So I've always been trying to do something to reduce those costs. And we've looked at and made a lot of changes with our light fixtures, lamps, and we're moving a lot more to LED fixtures where we can now to reduce consumption of electricity and our electrical costs. So where we're at now today, and where we've developed this through our board, and before we go any further, we wanted to come to this board because if we do an RFP process for proposals to install photovoltaic systems at the nature center in Little Sioux Park, it'll undoubtedly come back as a long-term lease situation. My board cannot do long-term leases, that has to be approved by this board, the Board of Supervisors. So before we even go to that step, and we have a form of RFP prepared by this consultant, that has to be vetted by the legal department yet, we figured we might as well come here and get this board's blessing before we go to the next step. What happens with an RFP, they answer a lot more questions for us. We don't know exact costs, we don't know what happens with the equipment at the end of the lease until we get these RFPs back. And they're going to be wide-open RFPs that, it's a reason for proposals, they can give us a lot of suggestions and alternatives. The basics of it is that the companies with the solar can take advantage, a private company can, investing company can come in and take advantage of the federal and state tax credits and depreciation on these systems, whereas government agencies cannot do that. So what they do is develop that as an investment. They become the producer of electricity, a third power, a third-party power producer, and they in turn can sell that electricity to us then. And we are able to purchase that power at a reduced rate from what we're spending now on electricity. The investment that these companies realize is through the buy-down in the costs, through tax credits and depreciation and grants that are available and other things, they can realize a pretty nice return on their investment over time. The term of the lease might be seven to 10 years, might be longer, might be less, whatever they determine their payback is. And we simply pay for our electricity at a reduced rate in those two areas each year. At the end of the lease, that equipment might be able to be purchased or sold to the county at whatever price would be, a depreciated price. They may renegotiate the lease, they may choose to put in more efficient equipment at that time because obviously technology's always changing with this stuff. Right now, solar seems to be the best bet. The equipment cost, there's no money down, that's the option we're looking at in the RFP. The county would have no investment in this whatsoever upfront. The county does not maintain the equipment, the county does not insure the equipment. And like I said, our only cost is what we're already paying for electricity but at a reduced rate. So it appears to us to be a win-win situation, which is why our board would like to take it to the next step. Issue the RFP, and once we get that, we would start working with the Iowa Energy Center and go to an agency that has no conflict of and go to an agency that has no conflict of interest with the proposals or any companies doing business. The consultant we've been working with would like to submit a proposal, so obviously, we can't go back to him to help us go through and take a look at these proposals when they do come in. So that's where we're at today, and that's what we're asking for. Be happy to try to answer more questions. It's a very involved, very complicated project, and hopefully, more, a lot more answers we'll have once R F Ps would come in.
Well, first, I'd like to applaud you on going through the due diligence report and recognizing that we do not want to go with the Woodberry County R E C because after five years, then we're at the spot market price, basically, when we're trying to stall back onto the grid.
Right.
So I'm glad to know, in our conversation today, to understand that that's not, that's not a part of this proposal any longer. Yes, one of my heartburns, for lack of a better term, is the original proposal went from one point four to one point nine million dollars, and you clarified we're looking at roughly four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand in the two respective parks.
Yes, yes.
And so, the original payback was twenty-eight and a half years. And so, just for our understanding, that means that the life of investment at the twenty-eight and a half year mark, now we break even on the upfront investment. That would be with all told with the Woodberry County R E Cs and Mid-American.
That's if we would bond and pay for it and own the project ourselves upfront.
Right, okay.
That long of a payback.
Okay, so now, when we're just talking these two, these two parks in particular, do we know what the payback is? Or do we know what a possible, just a ballpark would be on the amount of lease that we would be paying to, if we did the third-party purchase agreement?
As I understand it, our lease payment would be what we pay for electricity now because we're, that's all our payment is, we're buying power back from them. And that is usually discounted from what we're paying today. So, and then that would go with the length of the lease. And until the R F Ps come in from different companies and how they're going to formulate their lease and their equipment and everything, we won't know the exact term of that lease. And I don't know if that's a payback period or not because we're not involved with purchasing the equipment and trying to get payback.
But at some point, when that lease runs out.
Yeah, at that point, they've depreciated the equipment out, they would probably want to resell it or get rid of it, or maybe they want to, it's a good deal, they want to keep it up some way, and we'd have the option to renew that lease. We just, we just won't know.
And if the third-party provider, let's say, you know, because we're putting, as the report says, there's some risk involved in this. If you don't do the Minnesota flip, so to speak, which is one of the pricing models, because they basically admit in this report that the financing, the paybacks don't really make sense unless you use one of these two alternative financing models. And so, you have an agreement typically of twenty-five years for the third-party lease agreement. But if they're in a default situation, my understanding is the County assumes any tertiary debt for that. Do you know if our consultant talked about that at all, if they would go into a default status?
I've, yeah, I've been asking him some questions today about that. And I don't believe that's the case with these leases because it'll depend on the actual terms of the lease when we get that. And obviously, that's got to be vetted through legal as well before we enter into that lease. But all he told me was that the lease is treated as an asset by the County. If that's the facility that's generating electricity, you can compare it to any other facility, someone's going to take over that through bankruptcy court or whatever happens. It's going to continue to produce electricity for us, since that's where the system that it's hooked up to. We may, it could go a lot of different ways. It could go through bankruptcy court, someone else buys those assets, the County ends up buying the assets if they want to through bankruptcy court. I don't see how the County's going to be on the hook for any payments of that equipment if they're two years down the road in default. But I don't know the exact answer to that.
Now, so, you've really got to put out the R F P to find out what the rules of the game are.
We would find out a lot of answers, yeah. And at that point, we're still not out anything because the County doesn't have to accept them. I mean, we'll review them, we'll see what makes sense. Is it a good deal, isn't it? And, you know, we're out a little bit of my time and people's time in putting R F Ps together.
Yeah, I was just at the one meeting, and to make it really simple, the way I understood it, was with the tax credits, the grants and everything else, another entity, somebody looking for a long-term interest, is going to foot the bill on the entire project, and the only cost to the Conservation Department is electricity, which they pay now, but it will be at a much reduced rate. And I don't remember the period of time, or was it a percentage?
Over that lease period? Seven to ten years is typical, they said.
But the R F Ps will spell it out, and for them to go forward doesn't cost us time.
And I apologize for, it seemed to confuse the whole issue by sending you a copy of this due diligence report because by the time we throw everything out, that wasn't going to work. You know, we're only down to the two parks where it makes sense.
It gets down to two or three pages instead of a book.
Yeah, it does, it gets down instead of all this because that's what we've been working through and trying to figure this out, to get what makes sense and what can save us some dollars. And would be a unique project for the County, one of the first in the state. I think there's only one other County Conservation Board that's looking at doing this, and they're right at the R F P process now.
So you're looking for action just to go out for an R F P?
Yeah, basically to authorize the Conservation Board to issue the R F P. And we'll go through that process and come back before any lease can be signed, this Board has to approve it.
I'll move it.
Need a second?
Second.
What does it mean regarding the annual inflation rate for the third-party lease?
There would probably be a section in there where if we're paying X dollars per year of our electric rate reduced from what we are now, inflation's two or three percent, they may raise the electrical rate or reserve the right to do that each year by the amount of inflation. That'll depend on the R F P too, how they're going to formulate that.
And you said seven to ten years on here, and, sorry, it says twenty-five years is the typical.
Again, you got to throw that out because that's that whole due diligence report. And I apologize for that being so confusing.
I think you're going to.
The energy guy over here is, he's on it.
He knows it, yeah.
Us, you know, with me, them.
It's going to be a different conversation when the R F Ps come in.
Oh, sure, oh, sure. It'll be, it'll be very interesting and I think exciting to find out what's, what's out there, what can be done. Hopefully, it'll make a lot of sense and be good for the County.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, you got it.
All right, thank you.
I believe it was Ung and Taylor, nay. Secondary Roads.
Mark Narwood, Berry County Engineer. Good afternoon. Should I say good evening at this point? First thing we have is consideration approval of consultant services contract for surveying and plating of right-of-way. This is for the 250th Street grading project. This is one of our special levy projects that have been identified. This is going to be for the improvement of roughly three miles of road from the intersection of County Roads D-50 and L-27 west to Highway 31. This is in preparation for grading. This is a project where substantial right-of-way is going to be needed to allow completion of the project because of the hills that we're dealing with out there. This is also a federal aid project, or federal aid eligible route, once this project is complete.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. I will pass this right on down to.
Oh, did you already sign a copy?
I did.
Thank you. It also requires signature by the auditor as well.
Okay.
The next item we have is consideration of a permit to work in the right-of-way. There is some incorrect information there, this isn't Larry Etler, that got missed in a word processing error apparently. So I didn't catch that here till here today. This is actually for Hunt Farms of Salix, they're cleaning out a ditch along their farm property. It takes the water along their farm down to the Garrettson Drainage Ditch Outlet. I recommend approval.
Move the approval.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
And here, I'll give you the original for signature, Mr. Chair. And finally, we have a consideration to place a seasonal embargo on 250th Street, the very road that we're looking at grading for paving. This road has kind of come apart on us with all the heavy truck hauling. There are spring contracts that are being delivered, I believe, to the corn facility on Highway 31. The road's getting very difficult for us to maintain at this point in time and difficult to keep traffic moving through it. This, the duration of this embargo cannot exceed ninety days, and I will pull it off just as soon as the road settles down and we're able to get it taken care of. This also includes 220th Street, which is a seal coat road. This route is east of Sergeant Bluff, runs roughly one point five miles. That road needs a certain amount of protection from heavy truck loads in the spring. Seal coats tend to be very fragile under these conditions, and I recommend approval of the resolution.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We all have to sign.
Mark, did you look at that other road we talked about?
Yes, I did, and I called the resident, although I was only able to leave a message on their machine. We had Supervisor Clausen had received a call about 270th Street and Union Avenue. That area has seen, well, they have a number of animal confinements. They've been hauling liquid manure out of those with the big, heavy farm tractors. One of the farms in that area also is just harvesting their corn right now. With that, yeah, they're running heavy semi-loads, and it looked like a couple of grain cart loads, although they did not do that while I was out there observing their operations. We're trying to blade that road daily, just trying to keep the ruts knocked shut. And we will make, I informed the folks when I left them a message on their phone that we would be out there daily, or at least every other day, to try and knock those ruts shut and then make sure that we got it repaired just as soon as conditions allow us, so. They seem to be satisfied with that, I left them my phone numbers and they haven't called me back, so. This has been a spring where we have had, seen a substantial amount of frost damage and we have quite a few roads, just about anything receiving any level of truck traffic is taking a beating. Tomorrow's forecast gives me some encouragement, usually, as we get those good wet, heavy thunderstorms rolling in, it really starts to bring that frost out of the ground. Some areas, particularly where you got good sun, like the south-facing slopes and on some of the east-west roads where there's good sunshine, they're starting to come out of this now. So I'm hoping we won't see much more than a couple of weeks of this yet. Takes longer for the north-facing slopes to come out of this frost. But again, our staff is out working on them, we're hitting them frequently with the motor graders and trying to keep them as passable as possible.
Happens every year, doesn't it?
Pretty much, yeah. I wish it was the same spot every year.
I know, it's, I realize, yeah.
And maybe, maybe make some repairs, but it seems like they crop up at random sometimes.
I spent some quality time Sunday and Monday on the CF roads, as you do.
Yes.
They're, they're holding up well, given what's going on. I know you've lost a couple spots there that had to completely be redone.
And we did get some.
As I was out there talking on the telephone, I pulled up behind the deputy sheriff, who'd been there most of the morning. So, yeah, and he reported that speed is good for things that have signs on their door.
Yes. We did have the third large pour out there, three hundred and twenty trucks, all loaded, ten cubic yards. So thirty-two hundred cubic yard pour there at the plant, starting at 3:00 AM Sunday, and ran till about, I think Forrest called me at 3:30 PM Sunday that they had finally finished the work. We were out making some repairs to a couple of areas that had gotten unstable with spring thaw. We had those done, we worked Friday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday morning, getting aggregate haul to those. And then we had an operator and motor grader out there from 6:30 until they closed down at 3:30. So we wanted to make sure that they were able to keep hauling throughout the project. As far as I know, everything went well for them.
Yes, I believe it did.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Taylor, Housing Contracts and Auditor's Office and Public Accessibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a follow-up to last week's discussion. And this motion would ask that the Auditor's Office keep physical, original copies of all contracts entered into by the County Board and those authorized County officials on behalf of the County that are signed by the Board of Supervisors. So I would move that the Auditor's Office keep physical, original copies of all contracts entered into by the County Board, those authorized County officials on behalf of the County that are signed by the Board of Supervisors, and such contracts be made available to the public, both by request for paper copies and also available online to allow for greater public accessibility.
Need a second?
I would second that.
Mr. Gill, does this work for you?
Yes, it's just the beginning of an overall conversation about document retention.
Interesting, these things seem to be popping up every time we have a discussion, where's the contract? Or was there ever one? We're doing garbage right now, and we need to collect those, so.
Is there a timeline on contracts that you have to restate?
We discussed this before, is that it depends on how the contract is written, but if they have an expiration date, the document retention policy that the Auditor's affiliate came up with recommends that you keep them for ten years after the expiration date. And I think Joshua echoed that too.
Yeah, the statute of limitations on a written contract is ten years, so the very, I would say that'd be the minimum. Thing you have to watch out for is many of the contracts that we enter into automatically renew for an additional term if we, if they aren't terminated prior to the end of the initial term. So even if something maybe was initially signed for three years and then it could still be valid even beyond its initial term, so we won't be able to always say ten years from when we first signed it would be when we can destroy it. So we'll have to have a way of tracking that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, number thirteen. Be it resolved that Woodberry County supports the Sergeant Bluff Dogwood Trail.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
Part of that motion is the, you discussed the public accessibility, I just want to clarify that Gene has been meeting with the IT Department and anytime that in the minutes where it appears that copy filed or any of those that will have a link to that document so that the public will be able to take a look at that too.
That's real.
Thank you.
And what's the timeline for that?
We're working, actually, we're live through March 3rd or March 10th. We're also working on contracts, 20th agreements and any other agreement, so they'll be able to pull those documents up as well. So we should all be out there.
Okay. All right, item number thirteen. Be resolved that Woodberry County supports the Sergeant Bluff Dogwood Trail project. The County will initiate the process for amending the Liberty Park urban renewal area to include the Sergeant Bluff project. This was a discussion that began in 2014 regarding this road. And Woodberry County committed to support the road back then. and Woodbury County committed to support the road back then through TIF dollars, so this is more of a support for Sergeant Bluff. They have secured a RISE grant and are looking at using city funds, and we've committed to $500,000, and I believe it's grown since then to 800 because of changes that they will be explaining next week when they appear. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, isn't this the discussion we were going to have with Terry Lutz?
This came from Terry Lutz and Bob Johnston.
No, he was going to talk to the board and explain how all these things and the numbers that were arrived at.
But what this does is get the wheels rolling. In discussions with Bob Johnston, he actually wrote these two resolutions to begin the process.
Personally, I'm uncomfortable. The last that I knew, we voted to support up to $400,000. I believe we voted to. Now it's at 800,000, and I really don't know what the project is.
They will be here next week to explain it.
Well, could we hold this over until next week, then?
Well, I'd like to get it going so we can start the process of doing all of these things.
I believe the updated cost is reflected in the 2050 report. It hasn't been presented, like walked through, but we all received it, and I noticed that the numbers have changed, so it is updated and we have seen it.
Well, the numbers are there, I grant you that, but there's no explanation as to why. And when the county agreed to support, we didn't even put a dollar figure on it.
I don't, I don't think this motion puts a dollar figure on it either. I would move the approval.
You just.
Just to clarify, there isn't a resolution in the, in the homework, is there?
I never saw one.
Is there a resolution?
Yes. I didn't prepare it in that manner.
There is a resolution, okay. And, all right.
Yes, sir.
Well.
Need a second?
I don't know where it is.
I'll second it. Discussion further.
Where, did you come up with the resolution? It's not a resolution.
I guess the action, what I'm looking for, I think the action is just direct, the county can proceed with this process at this point.
That's the basis of this, yes.
Well, and I, I wasn't, as Mark said, this was Bob Johnston's request that this would be approved. If he's looking for an actual resolution, then approving a motion wouldn't be the same as a resolution. A resolution under the Iowa Code has to have, be numbered, has to have a title. So I think.
So as an action item, it works.
Well, yes, it's on the table, but I think it's more correctly a motion at this point rather than a resolution.
I'd amend my motion to give direction.
Okay.
Can we put a dollar figure in there or a maximum or something?
We will bring that back, yes. Further discussion? Roll call, sir.
Can I ask a question before you do that, Mark?
Sure.
Who is, who in the county is going to initiate the process, I guess?
That's the next one.
Oh, okay. And does it matter if the land is annexed in yet or not? Does that, I mean, does that, do they have to wait for that?
That's a part of it.
Okay.
That's, there's some.
I'm just trying to get caught up.
Yeah, I just, does this work if it's not annexed in the Sergeant Bluff?
Could, because we would be the TIF, but they're trying to annex it in, so it's a joint TIF.
But if they don't annex it in, then do we spend the entire $3 million on this road?
Well, forgot so, no. It's going to get annexed. They have an agreement to purchase the ground, and that's all worked out. It's just a matter of them getting it done. They are actually going to let the bid next week, which is kind of scary.
Yeah, I mean, it's moving so fast, I just.
I don't, I mean, I.
Can't keep up with what's going on.
I still support moving forward. I just, I guess I have a question on, I don't know. I guess I just don't even know what my question is right now.
Okay, Claussen?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mottson?
Aye. Okay, this next one would be a motion or action. Woodbury County staff be directed to work with McClure Engineering, Bob Johnston of Dorsey and Whitney Law Firm, the City of Sergeant Bluff, and others to initiate the process for amending the Liberty Park Urban Renewal Area to add property on which the city Dogwood Trail project will be constructed. This would make it possible for the county to make tax increment revenues from the urban renewal area available to the city for the project, including determination, the most appropriate means for the county to borrow the funds for the project. Ala Bob Johnston. Need a motion? This very simply is to put all of our people to work with the appropriate people.
And just to maybe, for lack of a better term, on Supervisor Smith's question, those Woodbury County staff, I assume being involved to be our budget analyst, our economic development director.
Planning and zoning, secondary roads, whoever deals.
At the table, working hand in hand with.
Right.
McClure and the 2050 vision that was, and I know this may not follow a number shoot, but that was priority number three.
Right.
After the IJR.
Right.
Study and move forward on the amendment of the.
Right, yeah.
And once.
I just wanted to.
Once again, we're not talking about dollars.
No. Do we have a motion?
Nope.
I'll move it. Need a second?
Second.
More discussion? Roll call.
Claussen?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mottson?
Aye. Okay, the last one, the board will approve the process of updating elevators to include engineering development of an RFP and bringing the RFP back to the board for approval to move forward with the bidding process. I contacted a group yesterday, West Plains Engineering out of Sioux Falls. They just did elevators in Madison, South Dakota, so they're up to speed. I don't know that we have elevator people here. We would, by approving this, hire them to develop an RFP, because I don't think we have anybody around here capable of doing that, especially in the county, which would then be brought back to the board with an estimate and the intent of moving out toward two elevators over two years, if we can work that out. Dennis, you want to speak to the money?
Okay, on the money portion, I did pass out a draft. It's not official, it's just a draft, showing what funds we do have available this current fiscal year. We do have enough funds to cover, if it would come developed, we would get it before June 30. We do have enough funds. Funds will carry over in the next year. So if we don't get it done this year, the funds will carry over unless we have new projects come up that, I have one in mind here that, talk about a board concerns here a little bit, but we do have the money available, and we'd cover architect fees out of that also.
Okay. Architector Engineering, I guess, one and the same.
No, I just want to make a comment on this. So this, at this point, is only obligating us on the engineering costs.
Correct.
And the development, subsequent development of an RFP, is that correct?
Correct.
Sort of Mr. Claussen's previous question, you know, so this isn't obligating us to an amount of funds other than that.
No, we don't know what we're obligating.
Okay. Well, and one other comment, I hope this isn't a furor, but I think at some point, you know, we talked about the elevators. I know we may be talking about entrances, we've talked energy tonight, and we have energy assessments from different buildings. At some point, it'd be good to have a 2050 vision for, so to speak, for facilities and a master plan. I know that there are groups working with Iowa Energy Bank and groups, you know, Supervisor Smith mentioned a space study at one point. So I, I hope in the near future to look at something where we have.
Mr. Taylor volunteers for.
Thanks, Chris. So, but that's, I think, would be good.
I agree with that. So we, we do have funds to do that?
Yes.
Need a motion to start the process of engineering to develop an RFP with West Plains Engineering of Sioux Falls, South Dakota?
I'd move approval, process of updating elevators to include engineering development by West Plains Engineering to develop an RFP and bring back the RFP to the board for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have one thing. It might be more of a nomenclature thing than anything, but since this is over the bidding threshold, it's going to be a formal bidding process. It's not technically an RFP, but the, part of the reason why we have to go to the engineer, the architect, is that the formal bidding process requires that the plans and specs are drawn up by the engineering firm. And then typically, that firm would also help guide it through the bidding process and opening of bids and that sort of thing.
Do you need me to amend the motion, then?
I think we all know what you're talking about, so.
All right, do we have a motion?
We did.
And a second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 14, Rural Economic Development Director David Gleiser.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development. First item I bring before the board is a request for the board to consider a motion to approve a loan application for Ultimate Fitness Incorporated in the amount of $60,000 on a five-year term at a fixed rate of 2%. The project has presented itself to my department. It was approved during the initial pre-application process, sent over to SCDC with a $350 application fee paid in full. The analysis came back favorable for an approval, and SCDC is actually involved in this project at 50, I'm sorry, 18%. County would be involved at 18%, and Central Bank would be involved at 56%, and then a personal equity injection from the borrower's family at 8%. So SCDC Loan Application Review Committee approved it for their share. Central Bank has approved it, and they've got the cash on hand from their family.
Need a motion?
Did this organization come to us first or to SCDC first?
I was approached from their bank, from Central Bank.
Actually, when we started doing this, we enlisted SCDC as our background checker, because that's what they do, and they do it very well. For David to determine whether or not their credit was good, that's not fair.
But on the face value, it presents a good project. The uses of funding would be going towards purchasing of a lot in Sergeant Bluff that is undeveloped at this time. It would be also used to construct the building and give them a contingency.
I move to approve the, oh.
Go ahead.
Approve the loan application for Ultimate Fitness, $60,000.
I'll second. Discussion?
What's the, the kind of job impact?
Yeah.
So the public understands that we're not simply in the business of lending money, you know, what kind of a.
Company currently has four part-time employees, and this would be a job creation of three to four new part-time employees.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, next one.
Second item would be a request for the board to consider a motion to approve the loan application for Countryman Financial Group LLC in the amount of $35,000 on a five-year term at a fixed rate of 2%. The project presented itself to my department. It passed the initial pre-application process, was moved on then to SCDC with a $350 application fee paid in full. At that time of referring it over, I did talk to SCDC to see if this would be a project that they would be interested in partnering with us through their revolving loan product. SCDC analysis did come back favorable for approval with them. SCDC's revolving loan fund participating at 19.2%. Woodbury County's share would be 44.7%, and then the owner has an equity injection of 36.1%. The job creation component would create one new full-time professional service in the city of Mowville with high opportunity or probability of additional professional positions created at a later time. This is not a project for new construction, but rather than to furnish, pay for working capital and startup costs for a new professional service in the city of Mowville. The owner of the business will be leasing newly renovated space that currently is more or less a shell. You know, four, four walls and a ceiling, so the, the space that he'll be occupying will be completely remodeled and renovated for offices, and then he would have the option to purchase at a later date. And the, the analysis that came back from SCDC was that for this particular venture, they believe it's better that the operator is not planning to build a new facility, but rather be able to demonstrate the feasibility of the business first.
Need a motion? I'll move it. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm, I'm going to vote against this, and it's strictly the reason Mr. Taylor brought it before, and that's, there is no, there aren't any jobs created by this. The person.
One?
Well, that's the person that owns the company, then one part-time guy, possibly. But just so you know where I'm at.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Same.
Okay.
The last item would be a request for the board to consider a motion to approve the participation of Woodbury County in the Iowa Board of Regions Innovation Fund Grant Application, which is being submitted by the Iowa Small Business Development Center at Western Iowa Tech Community College, and provide a $500 match in that application. The SBDC at Western Iowa Tech does service not only Woodbury County, but Plymouth, Cherokee, Ida, Carroll, and Manona Counties. They provide small business development consultation services to these jurisdictions. The, the amount of service that we've received in Woodbury County in the previous fiscal year in rural Woodbury County was 18 clients counseled at a total hours, counseled hours at 90. Two business startups, 29 jobs created, six retained. And so SBDC is a good resource for the work that I do in Woodbury County. And what they do with this grant application is, it's a dollar-for-dollar match, so it really helps their operating budget. Their budget is half of funding from SBA and half of what they are able to generate through the Board of Regions. So all of the other jurisdictions are being asked to come in at this request as well, and it is something that we did last year and approved.
Do they run that SBA stuff through SCDC? Do they run that SBA stuff through SEDC? Are they doing their own thing?
SEDC offers SBA loans, the five oh four program. SEDC, or I'm sorry, the Small Business Development Center receives funding for operating.
Oh, okay, okay. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, just so I'm clear, we're, we're providing a, a match, but those dollars aren't necessarily, we don't have a, a direct tieback, if I drew it out on a chart, that they're spent in Woodbury County for that match. Is that correct? I mean, they could, could be spent, we're sort of pooling, in other words. Is that, is that fair?
I'd say it's a fair assessment.
I, and, and I appreciate all that you do with the revolving loan program, the discussions that you've had in the two thousand and fifty vision plan. I get, and sort of echoing Mr. Claussen, maybe hint in the last discussion, I know in the economic development world that it's bigger than just sometimes tying right back to a specific job creation, but I think I may have in a minute before, if it, whether it's sponsorships or general infusion of, of county tax dollars. I get more, more nervous when we don't have that level of specificity, but appreciate what you do, and so just wanna explain my rationale.
The five hundred dollars, that does come out of the department's budget?
This entrepreneurship business, I think, is a really good thing, and it's, it's hard to define how they get their stuff to happen. Brad Cliff's very heavy into it. If it were more money, I think you'd be in trouble.
You know, it, it really is a partnership that I rely on heavily in terms of small business development. Folks that need help with writing a business plan, coming up with some accounting strategies, marketing strategies, filing for articles of incorporation, filing for federal tax ID. This is the, the organization that would help them do those sorts of things, so.
So, it does impact Woodbury County?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe not directly, but indirectly.
And we do have some fiscal impact from the amount of service that we've received in rural Woodbury County last year, sale increases of three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, capital infusion of four million, four point one million dollars. So, they are-